I love doing that. A meeting called, uh, I'm calling the, the Board of Trustees meeting to order. Uh, roll call.
Maloney.
Here.
Ermeling.
Here.
Here.
Mynow.
Here.
White.
Here.
John.
Here.
Sagami.
Here.
I'll call so, uh, the, to order the September twenty-ninth meeting of the Village of Weston Plan Commission. Uh, for full note, uh, amendments, please take roll call.
Okay, a roll call for Plan Commission, White.
Here.
Mynow.
Here.
Cronin.
Here.
Garrett.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Marshall.
Here.
And Mumper.
Here. Thank you. Okay, item four, and also if any possible or perceived conflicts of interest, if any members of the Plan Commission have had what's called ex parte communication concerning anything in this hearing, please notify us, the Plan Commission will determine. Also, if you have a conflict of interest, please let us know so we can advise whether you should step away or not. Any wants?
Mister, I just, I just want to clear something up here.
Sure.
Can you explain, can you tell us, I want to hear what you think ex parte communication means? Because this, this didn't show up on our agendas until you became Chair. So I'm, I'm, I guess, I'm curious why this is on here when nobody says anything, week after week after week? And I want to hear what you, what you think ex parte communication means, that all of us are on the same page.
Ex parte means communication about anything that's contained in a hearing. That may, you're, you're supposed to hear and listen to testimony that's at the hearing, not anything that's outside the hearing. So technically, if you have someone that comes to you, say, what about this project or this? You can come and testify at the hearing. Thank you very much.
So was it just in regards to anything in relation to the public hearing, or is it anything that's on the agenda for the hearing?
Just in hearing?
In particular.
So if there's no public hearing, then it's not on the agenda? Right?
But I, I ask it, like, just as a matter of, oh.
Yeah, that's all.
I'm just to get everybody to, in their mood.
Yeah.
So if your neighbor comes up to you and, and gives an opinion of something.
On a hearing.
Then you just tell him, I can't hear it, or?
So here's how you get contact. You can make contact on the website here, or you can show up at the meeting. Technically, anything that we hear about a hearing matter outside the hearing is considered ex parte communication.
I've never heard, I've been to county board meetings for years on public hearings, and I've never heard.
Not a lot of people are aware.
I, I'll give you a quick example. Um, back when I was on the Plan Commission previously, um, there was an issue about Airbnb's and what the Plan Commission was going, how it was going to address them. On the hearing, uh, was it, probably six, seven houses away from me was specifically the house that was in question. Um, my neighbors came over one day and knocked on the door. I opened it up and they said, uh, we're here and we're, we're taking signatures about the Airbnb issue at the hearing. And I said, stop, timeout, I'm on the Plan Commission, I can't be involved in this. Um, please, you know, if you want to come to Plan Commission meeting, uh, you know, we're more happy to add your comments, but I can't discuss this issue with you.
Okay. So when somebody comes up to us, we just say timeout, can't discuss?
You, you can listen to them, but I would suggest, see, this is on a hearing. I know it's hard to do when you, when you want to receive information from the public. In particular, uh, if you have something, uh, it, the, the theory is that that person could unduly influence you without listening to the rest of the information that's presented at a hearing.
Okay.
I would expect all our Plan Commission members would not participate in that, but.
I'm not questioning that. I think everybody here has enough integrity to say something.
I believe so also.
Um, I guess, you know, it, it wasn't on there prior to you being Chair. I, I did take a look at those City of Wausau's Plan Commission meeting. They don't have it on their agenda. Same with the Village of Kowron, I didn't go any further than that. I did look at some of the other agendas for other committees in the village here. None of them have it on there either. So I guess I'm wondering what, what prompted this to be on there?
Actually, it's, it's a suggestion by the, the, the state and the league as far as, uh, the running of Plan Commission. That you have a state.
Specifically for the Plan Commission, not for any other committee.
It, it's, the one that I've seen is for Plan Commission.
Public hearing.
Public hearings.
Okay. I just wanted to clear that up.
And that's also protect, to protect members of the Plan Commission, so if something turns out later, I had a conversation with so and so. There's nothing wrong with, if you say it, and we, we, as a Plan Com- Commission, would hear what the conversation was, and we could determine whether that person should step away when that comes up on the hearing.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does. Does anybody else have any other, anything else they want to?
Um, does, I guess, when you say, like, timeout, do you, you just invite them to come to the hearing and make their, their comments known there?
Well, you, we do have a paper form that we have available onsite that can fill out. They can send emails to myself or President Maloney. They can send them to, to Jen or, uh,
Okay.
Valerie, uh, and show up, uh, either in person, or they can also come in and offer testimony by Zoom. It's, um, part of the reason is it's considered quasi judicial function, and we are judges. It's just the same way that a judge would no, would not go out and interview witnesses outside of a trial. That's about the best explanation I can say. Or they wouldn't have witnesses come up to the judge and, and, and ask them, because we are, that's why it's referred to as a quasi judicial. We are the judges. Anything else?
No, Lauren, you've said this at just about every meeting though, right? Not in every, I mean, is it make a difference if it's got to be at a public hearing or?
Well, one of the things that taught, if there is a, um, generally in a hearing, it's, it should be done, but it doesn't hurt to do it otherwise.
Yeah, that's why it's not in every meeting.
I, I have done it in every Plan Commission meeting, yes.
Well, so you said it doesn't hurt to do it otherwise, but you said it's specifically recommended for public hearings.
Correct.
So what's the point of asking it if we don't mean, if, if this doesn't apply to
As, as Chair.
everything else on the, on the agenda that's not a public hearing, I guess, what's the point?
I'm responsible for running the meetings as Chair. So I, I can choose to do that.
Okay.
And that, we had, the, the Plan Commission has, has, uh, has not gotten up to the Plan Commission rules from any of those. And we voided and didn't want to do any of that. Jen?
So the conflict of interest part, is there something on the agenda that you're involved in and you may have a question on? That's when you should bring it up, because you shouldn't be talking about the item and then bring it up at the end and say, oh, I'm not gonna, I'm not going to act on this because I have a conflict. That should come out at the beginning. Lauren and I put this on the agenda after we went through, um, and watched the states, um, the, the league. It was either the league or the CLUs, which is the Center for Land Use, held an open meeting laws. Mark was on that too, so, um, and I think I shared that all with you. So there are communities that put it on. It's just a reminder. Um, it just gives you an opportunity to ask, because if you, if you don't know, um, the rest of them can decide to, and it's something that you should recruit, you know, step aside for and not talk through the meeting on.
Mr. Chair?
So is this any different than being yourself?
Yeah.
Um, it is different, because recruiting yourself is when you have a personal interest. You, you did properly at the last meeting where you had a project that was all been one of yours, recruited yourself and sat in the audience, which is, means you have a direct, uh, the fancy term is financial interest. Either you or immediate family or someone close to you or a business that you own has a, a financial interest in the issue that is coming before the Plan Commission, and you did it properly.
Otherwise, if there's a conflict of interest, it may be that you, there's a scenario coming up, maybe it's, um, who Shane's building and, uh, and who Shane wasn't on the board and, and, and I was doing work for Shane, and I would say, uh, it's a conflict of interest. If it's a.
Possibly. Sometimes you just bring it up and let the rest talk.
That's, that's.
You know, none of us have any power unless we're here. You know, so it, it'd be like tonight on the, on, on a different item on the Schofield Avenue, possible name change or, or, or to reverse. You know, I, I have a feeling how it's gonna go, but I can't poll anybody. None of us can poll each other. We have to do that vote here in front and be transparent.
So question for Mark, if I could, um, I, I imagine you probably got bombarded with phone calls about that.
Yeah.
Is that, how, how do you?
A lot of stuff.
represent yourself with that?
Hmm?
And how do you represent yourself with that?
Um, I give them my opinion.
But why you mean, oh, how do you, when you're asked the same question, is this a conflict of interest? Is it, uh, ex parte? Is it?
Well, I, um, lately, the last couple of weeks, I've been telling everybody how much I've been being educated, that's for darn sure. And, uh, I, I, I'm disappointed in myself that I didn't feel this moving or that I didn't think of this.
Mr. Chairman, it is coming up later on.
Yes, it is, so I'll quit talking. There you go. Okay. You know, I, I just want to say one more thing. Um, Jen brought up this, these meetings that I, I partook on, not as many as, uh, Jen and Lauren, but you know, one thing right here is this, if, if we pick these up during a meeting, we're not supposed to do it.
It's supposed to be off.
They're supposed to be off. You know, I'm, I'm usually texting my wife if I'm gonna make it home for dinner or not. I never do. But nobody else there, none of you know who I'm talking to. You know, am I getting advice? Is somebody, uh, is somebody in my ear? So any, anytime someone looks at their phone on these committees or commissions or the board, that's a no-no. And we haven't brought it up yet, but we're going to bring it up. Because it's just something that we, everything should be transparent.
Okay, you'll see some communities actually ask for members of committee, commissions and councils to shut their cell phones off.
Okay.
All right, and again, again, I wasn't, uh, trying to attack you with that, Mark. I was just asking, how do you, how do you, when you come to a meeting, if you've gotten contact against all of those things, what do you say? Well, so and so, you say to the committee, so and so talked to me, this person, you make a list of all the people that have called you and?
I, I'm getting better at, on my response, but when I'm on a one-on-one with a resident, I, I feel I can tell them my views. I, I'm not gonna tell them how I'm gonna vote, you know, but it's, uh, it's, it's, I, in the last three years, I've, you know, I've been on here three different times in my life, and this time I'm learning the most, you know, so.
Oh, Mr. Chair, is, that sample from you people that contact me either by phone or, um, by email usually is a contact. Thank you for input. I'll make sure they have your concerns entered during the hearing. Um, do I say I'm for or against it? No?
Well, I don't think that any one of us would, but I'm saying, so do you have to, do you mention those at, at the beginning of the meeting if somebody has contacted you?
Sure, but hearing, I, I mentioned, I read them all.
Yeah, so those are the ones that you're saying that gave you an email and you read those emails?
Right.
But if, what I'm saying, if it was a normal conversation, that something is on a subject and somebody called you on, are you having to?
I would give them the same answer that, that I've said, you're, I, I appreciate your input. You can make a comment at the hearing. I know it sounds like I'm, you know, dusting them off and not commenting, but, um, it has a problem as far as, um, maybe I have an opinion on it and, uh, a lot of it also happens when you'll get a call from somebody, they, they call a bunch of us, well, Plan Commissioner White said this. What do you think? You know, the third party, it's, it's far-fetched, but.
But, but Lauren's right, they could be polling that commission, committee or board. You, you don't know what their next call is. You don't know what the first three calls were, and they could potentially be polling the committee commissioner report and getting a, each individual view on how they're gonna come in or weigh in or vote. So you gotta be careful. Yeah. There's times I have conversations with Lauren, not about this sometimes, but he just leaves me hanging. And, and I realize, oh, okay, he's done, he's done talking.
That could be rude.
Yeah, no, I don't take it that way. I did it first, for the first two years, but after that, I'm just kidding.
It only took two years?
No, I'm just kidding. All right, number five, everybody down there? Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, potential conflict of interest.
Okay.
I have an accepted purchase offer, a commercial piece of property inside of TID two.
Okay. So when that comes up, do you feel that you should, uh, recuse yourself?
No.
Plan Commission members?
Unless it was subject to the piece of land that was being.
It is not removed.
Removed.
It's not subject to that, then I would say it's.
Right, yeah. I would be, I would be.
Okay, that's a decision of the Plan Commission?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
By consensus. Okay? Thank you. Wasn't too difficult.
No.
Thank you. Um, what else? Uh, item five, approved minutes of the September thirteen, twenty twenty-one Plan Commission meeting.
Move to approve.
Move by Jordan.
Second.
Second by Mumper. On the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So carried. Plan Commission, public hearing. Again, if the public wishes to speak at the hearing, please fill out a public comment form, which is available online and registered with a, for Parker prior to the starting of the meeting. Or please log in using the Zoom meeting information listed above and raise your hand to be recognized to speak. Okay, TID District Two Project Plan Amendment, PC, item six, proposed project plan amendments to tax incremental District Number Two. I'll open the public hearing. Presentation is by MD Ralphers. I would assume he's online, correct?
Um, no.
No, we did not feel it was necessary.
Okay.
Um, I guess just to kind of lead in here, of course, we had our initial public hearing for a proposed amendment to tax incremental District Number Two, uh, which is along Schofield Avenue from Village Boundary on the west, say Normanby Street or the, or the, uh, boundary line with the City of Schofield over to Birch Street essentially. The initial proposed project plan amendment had, uh, included some specific, uh, proposed amendments to the project plan itself as far as, uh, what projects were eligible and what, um, potential expenses might be eligible as well. Also included the territory amendment that is included in this revised version of the project plan amendment. Uh, the action taken by the Plan Commission, uh, last time, um, and, uh, objection or rejecting the, the projects or the additional proposed expenditures, um, uh, was, was made, however, it was also recognized after that action was taken that the, one of the other elements here was the desire to remove two small parcels, actually three small parcels of land. Mike, I don't know if you can put that, a map up there, just the, kind of the visual.
Nate has that.
Um, but the, or Nate, I'm sorry.
Age sixty-one?
Sixty-one?
Sixty-six, sorry, it's too much, it's, it's too tall. But, okay, anyway, um, so the reason these were being proposed for removal was, is explained in the project plan narrative. Right now, those parcels are really too small to be marketable and have some kind of significant development put on them. They need to be combined with other, with other lands, and, uh, the way the TIF law is written, parcel can't be both in or partially in and partially out, TID, so the proposal is to remove those two areas from the project, uh, boundary. So that is the only item, um, the only topic, uh, that this proposed amendment is with regard to. Uh, there was considerable input about tax increment, district financing in general at the last meeting. Um, this, this proposed amendment really does not, uh, pertain to any of that testimony that was given last, or all of those comments from last time. Certainly those are, there was comments that we were, um, room to address going forward, but the topic tonight is really just the boundary amendment.
Anything else for Scott?
Nothing else for me.
Okay. I'll take comments from the public right now. Is there anyone that had a written comment? Valerie?
Um, I think someone handed you one, but was that for something else?
That was a different topic.
First, what's that?
Okay, so I had, I did not receive anything.
Okay, is, is there anyone online that wishes to comment?
Lauren, I do have a video to play from someone that sent something in.
Yeah, uh, it's Nate talking.
Okay.
He's in a different room and he has a video. Someone could not be here tonight and he, uh, made a video instead of words and, uh.
Is he identif, is the person identified by name and address in, um, video, Nate?
In the video, they do, yes.
If, we could play that, please.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Jesse Wellhafer. I live at fifty-four oh seven Chale Drive, Western Wisconsin. I'm sorry I can't be here in person, nor will I get to see how things play out, as I am currently bird hunting in North Dakota. And after that, I will be in Africa on a one-month mission trip. Normally, when I'm overseas, I always share that I'm happy to pay my taxes in the USA because I can trust that back home, I know my tax dollars will be spent in the best possible way by people who are fiscally responsible and working for the people and in the best interest of the people. But I see a change in our local government lately. So before I can address the specifics of TID two land maneuvers, I must first address this. What we are seeing here today is just a symptom of a larger issue. The larger issue I see happening here is that the local government is forgetting they are employed by the people and for the people. Instead, I see a local government which is working hard to grow itself into an entity that controls the people instead of the other way around. In my short time watching what is going on, I saw a group of very successful people, presidents of successful companies, owners of successful organizations, et cetera, the very people in this room who are sitting on this planning board committee. The very group who basically volunteers their time to help our community. The very group who's supposed to help guide our government through checks and balances. I watched this group get forced into being rubber stampers. I saw that group ask the very questions they should be asking and get patronized and belittled for asking these questions. I watched as they were basically bullied into approving a plan, which none of them seemed to agree with, a plan and none of them would allow to enter. Then, at the public meeting, I took note of the agenda, starting out with big intimidating words like ex parte communication. I, for one, would expect the people who plan how to spend my millions to actually spend time discussing this before approving stuff. So to me, it seems like there are those who wish to scare and bully others into compliance. Also, I noticed something which raised a lot of red flags in my mind, but went uncontested. I watched how Keith made the point that closing the TID would not actually help lower the taxes much. He showed how a large sum of money is going toward the salaries of people managing the ongoings of the TID. He showed how this money would still be used to pay those employees. Come on, what does this even mean? Why are we still paying them? I suppose we'll need to keep them employed and hire more employees to fill the Taj Mahal. Well, at least all these extra people working, you can rest assured that your neighbor will never again change their light bulb without a proper permit. I watched as people from the community spoke out against the plan. They were not treated with respect by the people who had already made up their minds ahead of time that they were pushing their plan through no matter what the people said. In fact, it seemed when the committee board actually followed the voice of the people, which I applaud you for doing, there were those who still looked on in disbelief as these successful people did not vote as they were expected to. I applaud this group of people for making the last minute decision of going against the peer pressure and listening to the people who they represent. So again, before anyone decides how to spend our money, I ask that those who feel they are in control, step back, work with the other leaders around you, and come up with a real vision and plan together. I ask that this group work together for the good of the people, not the insecurities of a government entity. From what I have seen, this local government does not have a tried and true method of fiduciary procedures in place when deciding how to spend our money. So I'll make the same ask I did last time, which was clearly ignored. I ask that our elected officials treat every dollar of our money spent as if it were their own, and that they need a return on investment. I ask that you put together a process in which each decision shows a clear return on investment for every dollar spent. I ask that this committee show everyone here what their fiduciary standards and procedures are when approving the spending of money. I ask that the people of this committee act on behalf of the people and for the people. As for the allocation of the land, this is a greenfield. This cannot pass the sniff test. This should be permanently removed, not just refactored. Actually, both TIDs should be closed until our local government can supply the already stated ask before spending any more money. The last thing I want is for the local government to think that raising house prices justifies increasing our taxes just because they're not being responsible with our money. Thank you very much, and may God bless you all.
Thank you, Nate. Is, that was it?
Yes.
Anything else?
Uh, nothing else, no.
All right. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone speaking in favor or in opposition? Anyone else online, Nate? Hello?
Yeah, sorry, I, I don't need myself. Uh, no one, no one with their hand raised or anything?
One last time, anybody wishes to speak in favor or in opposition? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item E, discussion and action by the Plan Commission. Who wants to lead up? I'll call on everyone.
Uh, I make a motion to, uh, Village of Weston Resolution Number twenty twenty-one dash PC dash triple or double oh eight.
A motion by Jordan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Garrett. On the question. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So carried. Thank you. Um, I would maintain a motion to adjourn the PC.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Move by Mumper.
A second.
Second by Marshall. On the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? So carried. Thank you. Sorry you had to come here for such a short meeting, but you could stay in, in for the village board part. Nobody wants to speak?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Uh, Board of Trustees, new business, number seven. Resolution Number two zero two one dash zero two five, a resolution approving the territory subtraction amendment to the tax incremental District TID Number Two, project plan for the Village of Weston, Marathon County, Wisconsin.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Uh, motion by Zon.
Second.
Second by Peeny. On the discussion. Any on the discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Number eight, Resolution Number two zero two one dash zero two six, a resolution accepting dedication of land for expansion of the public right-of-way of Windsor Drive.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mark.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ermeling.
Okay.
Uh, second by Hushain, uh, Zagami.
Get slower.
Yeah, you, you're, it's all right. Um, any more on the discussion?
Just one question. Is, is this part of the outlot stuff that has kind of been pending for?
This is a similar issue. This is in the Wardenmore Hope subdivision, though.
Right.
So the Wanderer Springs subdivision, outlots are before a judge to make a declaratory judgment on the, uh, disposition.
One of the, yeah.
Yeah, disposition, correct. Yeah, the two potential, uh, parties that would, have a coin have been notified, but had not provided any, um, response or, or contest.
We, we, we had discussions before, though, on, on other outlots that just.
There may be others, and we have not done a copy, considering you go along with subdivisions, it's probably a good thing we should try to attempt to do maybe if we had a summer intern or something like that, or just kind of look through all the flats, I know we know. It might be, you know, a bit of a time that we ask, you know.
Mr. President, just a point of order. I believe who, um, trustee, uh, White has been mentioning that we're kind of off topic at this moment here.
What's an outlot that?
We're talking, we're talking exactly what night?
What?
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You were talking about the other one. Also, were you not?
In a, as an example.
As a similar.
Example.
Okay.
Similar situation. We, so I guess.
Clarifying, I, I.
Just, 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 just.
Just stand up instead of just over there so that I'll take it up and I'll ask the question and we'll go from there. Okay?
We have a number of outlots besides this one. I'm, I'm at the end of Warwick Drive. And it, it's actually the road, but this one has been pending since it was made.
First decade.
Right. We have other outlots in the village that we've talked about addressing, so we don't have this problem that we have right now in the courts. And all I'm asking is, is that if this is all part of it related, are we addressing it? I mean, that plan's been it for twenty years, eighteen years, something like that. Just bringing it up for discussion. My expectation and hope is that we'll be addressing it.
I believe Mr. Donner addressed that in one of his newsletters, did you not?
Well, and again, this, this has come up before and uh, I guess the point being that we should put it up on a party list that to look at other similar situations. We're also having outlots that are probably being used for.
Or rescind resolution number. Well, it wasn't being recorded?
No, made.
Okay.
Made me host it, kicked that guy off.
Okay, so we're back on?
We're back on.
For the last motion?
Yes, yeah, we voted on the last one and it was Barb and Wu Sheng, right?
No, I got that, but I didn't hear.
Oh, that was Zhong Feeny.
Yeah, Zhong Feeny. Yep. And then discussion by Minell and then vote.
We were on the question though, but Steve Minell asked a question after the motion was made, but then there was no hold, right?
No, no, we just, we just did.
Did I just, did I miss it? I missed it, sorry.
Okay. So you got Nate, uh, Zong and Feeny?
Yep, I got that.
Okay, discussion by Minell and then we voted.
Okay.
Unanimous.
Alright.
Okay, uh, nine, discussion and action to affirm or rescind resolution number two zero two one dash zero two three. Resolution to change the name of Schofield Avenue.
Yep, Ben. I just wanted to say that um I felt it was important that we bring this back. That's why I requested it to be on the agenda. I think we need to relook, discuss, not saying how, I mean, but I just thought it was important after this, being at the planning committee meetings and speaking to the all the businesses and whatnot all, I felt it important that we address it.
Barb is the trustee that uh, that did bring this up to put on the next agenda in October. And then after further discussion, we decided to put it on September twenty-ninth. Um, the, i- if there's a chance of a change, why wait to the end of October? Why not do it this evening and get it done so we can put this to rest? Uh, Nate?
Uh, I move to rescind, um, I, I've got, I've got public comments.
Oh, yeah, I was like.
You know, I, 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 I kind of think, I don't know which way this vote's gonna go and I, if it doesn't go I think some people just, I, we don't have many. So let me just read one in. I'm gonna read one into the record. Uh, one is by Holly Jorgensen and I did bring her up at the last meeting and she left me a voicemail or an email that she is opposed, like the first time we talked too. Um, this one here is from Craig Radloff across the street at CCT uh Control Concepts Technology.
Craig is here.
Oh, Craig, do you want to talk?
No.
Just read it? Okay, good. Uh, hello, Mr. Donner. It's addressed to um our administrator. Uh, thank you for your response to my letter. I feel the need to express my opposition to the proposal to rename Schofield Avenue. Numerous business people have attended the last meeting to give reasons for not moving forward with the renaming. Incurred costs and damaging confusion of lost business were the main reasons. Assigned petition has been submitted by many business owners opposing the name change. I believe many others would come forward if a better communication process had been implemented or at least a survey of property owners affected. I understand that justification for the name change was stated as confusion among residents, visitors, and businesses and owners. Um, I believe that following questions have not been properly answered. Is this hearsay? Is there documentation of these concerns on the record? Is this the opinion of only a handful of people? I emphasize with yourself and the rest of the board on personally feeling that Weston should have a proper name recognition. I do not feel this is the correct action to move forward, excuse me, toward a common goal. I do not think the renaming is in the best interest of the village or the people slash owners affected. Sincerely, Craig Radloff, president of CCT Enterprises. Thank you, Craig. Um, I have another one here uh before I go with the audience here. Uh, oh, uh, Jim, you wanna come up and talk?
I'll go last.
Okay, you wanna go last? Cool. Um, uh, anybody else want to talk?
Yeah, I'll go, Brian.
Okay, just just naming uh, just for record again.
Sure, Morgan Woodruff. Um, I'm at five six oh six Burkey Street over in Schofield. Um, a couple of things, I actually took some notes during the meeting. Um, last week you told us that it was exclusively you and that you're responsible for this, but here's the thing. It was a unanimous decision through a closed board that nobody was ever accounted for. We weren't even told about it. So it wasn't just you, it was all of you that did it. And you said you think that it should be put back on and maybe a decision should be made. No. It should be put back on and a decision should be made in favor of all the businesses that were here and the people who showed up on their time. This isn't something that should very much be up for discussion. You should rescind it and do what's right. We talked about what's right and wrong. Um, and I, I mean, obviously things got through to you for the fact that you showed up at my place of employment and told me I didn't need to come tonight. I feel the need to come tonight.
I did say you didn't need to come. I, I told you the date of the meeting.
You did, and you said I didn't need to be here. Those words rang very, please don't go back and forth with me. Those words rang very true to the point where I, I, it resonated with me. I took off work tonight so that I can be here. I think that this is wrong. I think what you guys did is wrong. You have the option and the chance to make it right, and I hope you do so.
Thank you. Um, anybody else uh in the audience that wants to speak or on social media? Uh, Dave?
David Barnes, uh, I own a total rental center, total self-storage, U-Haul Weston and Red Clover Market at five thousand nine Schofield Avenue, Weston. Um, one of the things I wanted to just bring up that um the village has or had, I'm not sure exactly, uh, a paid employee that a while back was coming around to different businesses and was asking the businesses to be part of the village's Facebook page and kind of, you know, get small businesses and everything. And I, I actually, I didn't participate at the time. Hindsight being what it is, I just in my head, I said I was too busy. But anyways, um, my point in bringing that up is the fact that you had the time and had a village employee come around. So I believe all the businesses in the village and ask if they want to be a part of the Facebook page. But you got what, a hundred, a hundred and fifty businesses on Schofield Avenue? And nobody comes to a business and says, hey, what do you think? Even if it's just an opinion, you know, what do you think? Um, Schofield Weston post office issue, um, you know, we, if anybody that's been around, you know, understands it, that's kind of a weird thing. But it happens a lot, especially nowadays post office budgets and everything like that. There's a lot of small bit uh post offices being closed. It, it's, that part's kind of confusing. Changing the name of Schofield Avenue does absolutely nothing, nothing to fix that. Education, you know, i- i- it, it seems odd that people that live in Weston don't know they live in Weston, they don't know they own a business in Weston. It's kind of understandable with the post office. It has nothing to do with Schofield Avenue. That thing's been Schofield Avenue before this was Weston Meadows. And it needs to remain Schofield Avenue. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Dave. Anybody else in the audience? Anybody on social media? Michael, anybody have their hand up?
No, nobody has a hand up.
Follow up?
Good evening. Jim Hudson out of five thousand two Arrow Street, Weston. Um, first I'd like to ask trustee Hermling to clarify or, or rescind what she said. Um, the public was not present. There were no business owners present at the planning commission hearing. There may have been business owners, but not the large turnout that you had stated. Um, that was at the village board meeting. Uh, second, uh, I, I agree with all the folks here that, that spoke in opposition. I spoke quite lengthy last time. I think it's the wrong decision for the village to make. Um, I strongly agree with uh the words that were said that it's not one person that made this happen. It was a unanimous decision. Um, we all make mistakes, uh, but now's your chance to make it right. Furthermore, moving forward, let's take the rubber stamp and throw it away. If we don't want to have any of this ex parte communication, which was brought up earlier, um, I think it's a great idea. We should contact all one hundred and fifty businesses that are affected by this. But when we do that, apparently we can't do that outside. That all has to happen here. So we need to roll out the red carpet. We need to come down and hand invite or mail an invite or email an invite, smoke signal, passenger pigeon, something to get everybody down here. And there's nowhere near enough chairs here. So all of these chairs need to be filled with all of these people that are incurring a significant cost and you need to hear what we have to say before you make your decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would like to reiterate my motion to re- my uh motion to rescind uh resolution uh tw- twenty-one dash zero two-three. Motion by Feeny?
Second.
Second by White. On the discussion.
I guess.
Yep.
I just, I, I, you're correct. I was at the planning committee with the, the tip thing and I was listening to that and was a very good crowd and I was, in my head, I was thinking that yous were there too, but yes, and I did listen to what you had to say and I did. I don't know if I should have been doing that or not, but I actually went around to different people just that I would kind of vaguely know or knew well or whatever. And I just asked what their opinion was of changing Scho- not just the businesses, but and I got mixed responses. Um, I found that sometimes it was more of the um some of the older people that really would like to see the change because they have such a a pride and they get this, you know, Schofield Avenue and, and the comments somewhere. Well, the businesses on Schofield Avenue say they're from Schofield and that's not right. And I said, well, um, they're naming it because of the street. I said, um, no different than if somebody lived on a side street and named their business on the side street. That doesn't mean, you know, um. But I found that the biggest issue, and I've known this, I can't believe I'm actually talking because I probably was over the years, one of the biggest proponents to changing Schofield Avenue. It has always been, um, I've been here too long. Um, but people did identify the fact that they were, that Schofield Avenue was Schofield. They really did. Not so much because I think the village of Weston has done a fairly decent campaign of telling people you're in Weston. It's not Schofield, you are in Weston. But the biggest problem, and I can't tell you how to resolve it, is to prob- to get people to understand or businesses that do mail orders or whatever, that Weston exists. Just the other day I made a phone call to a pharmacy that's in Weston. They say they're in Schofield. Just.
Yep.
Simple fact, but it's, I don't think it's because they're on Schofield Avenue. It's because the post office. It's the five, four, four, seven, six. I may do orders and sometimes I can get them to actually take it as Weston. Other times I sit and argue with them and I end up losing. Um, but the one of the issues that really brought it home, and like I said, um, when we became a village, I I wasn't a voting member of the board then, I was the clerk. Um, I tried to talk that this would be a good time and of course from opposition and then, well, it didn't happen and that's if it was going to happen, should have. And I still in my heart would like to see it named something different, but I also, the practical side of me says that's me. That's not you or some others. I had two people that, like I said, were really enthused about it. They thought that was the best thing that they could hear. And then somebody sent me, I asked where somebody was and they told me the street and I did not have a clue where that street was. It was a very familiar street before, but it wasn't now. And I had to say, where in the world is that? And they said, well, that used to be. And I went, aha, okay. And I guess I don't want that. I don't want us to start losing businesses or whatever because personally, I would like it changed, personally.
Yeah. Anybody else? I, I, I just want to, um, forever since last Monday and, and conversations uh, you know, verbally, in person, or on the phone, or emailing, or visiting at your place of business. Um, last Monday night and beyond and forward, I have truly been educated. And I will never think of Schofield Avenue again as the city of Schofield, never. I am completely changed. I, I was in that camp too, thinking that that's the right thing to do. But I will always think of as Dr. John Schofield, one of the founders of this area. And uh, regardless if we had changed it, it will always be referred to as Schofield, always. And uh, Dave, you, you just had a classic comment about the, the so-called identity we have has nothing to do with that name change, nothing. I think you even made that comment too. Uh, I know Craig, you did. Uh, Jim, you've done it many times with me. And it's, it's, I'm completely changed and I have no problem, no issue of voting the way I'm gonna vote today, not at all. So not much of a discussion, just a statement, but uh, I want to thank, I, I, I've had some great conversations. I know we've had some great emails. I'm sure others have too. I, I feel way more connected to the business community on Schofield Avenue than I ever have, ever. I mean, Craig, I've never met you. I've known you've been over there forever and we had a great conversation, you know, and others I've known and we have better ones now, some I've never met and I think we've had good conversations. So, you know, it's uh, I stand corrected. So, anyway, uh, with no more discussion, um, we have a, a motion and a second. Uh, I call the question.
Oh, point of order. Uh, trustee White, we need five votes to formally rescind the motion, correct? If my math is right.
I believe so.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Unanimous. So carried. Thank you all. Thank you, everybody that showed up. Anybody on uh, social media? Oh, well, it's unanimous, so we don't need roll call.
So, so it's, it was unanimous.
Thank you all for your comments. Um, attorney referrals. Any attorney referrals? You want to have a, a second for everyone to leave or what? We're gonna go into closed session? Everybody just let me know. And uh, but if you want to take a, a quick, I mean, it's only forty-five minutes. Want to take a break?
We should make the motion about closing.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I move that we move that we enter into closed session for Wisconsin statute nineteen eighty-five, parent one, parent C for the purpose to consider employment, promotion, compensation, or affirmative evaluation data of any public jurisdiction over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, specifically the village administrator.
Okay.
Um, so move.
Aye.
Second by Zagami. On the question.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote.
Hearing none, roll call vote.
Baloney?
Yeah, uh, aye.
Hermling?
Aye.
Feeny?
Aye.
Minell?
Aye.
White?
Aye.
Zong?
Aye.
Zagami?
Aye.
We are in closed session. I'll be right back.